My name is Terry Turpin, resident of Fayetteville, 7441 White River Ridge. I own a business in Fayetteville. First of all, Mayor Jordan, members of the council, I'd just like to thank you for the allowing to public to speak on this issue and for staying up all night to do that. I know that in many cities, that would not be the case. The other thing I'd like to say first is, I love this city, and I love the people in this city. And I respect the courage and the tenacity of the people who have taken the time out of their day to show up and speak on a very tough issue, and the courage of some people who would rather not get up and speak but are doing it anyways. And you know what? I respect the heck out of people who will come and take a stand on one side of an issue or of another versus staying home. I was born in Fayetteville, graduated from FHS, U of A, U of A School of Law. Been a resident of Fayetteville for forty-five years. I've started and run two different companies in the last sixteen years. You've heard a lot of perspectives tonight. I'd like to give you another one from the business perspective. I understand the intent of the proposed ordinance, and like many here, I appreciate the goals of fairness and equality, of maintaining a city that's built on diversity. In fact, that's one of the reasons I've never left Fayetteville, and I've had opportunities to, because it's a place where despite any differing beliefs or opinions, people have always found a way to live in relative harmony. However, it's important to point out that the language in this ordinance was created by people who do not live in Fayetteville and don't understand our city. As an owner of a company that provides two-hundred-and-twenty-five jobs in this town, I'd like to shed some light on some unintended consequences that I see from this ordinance. At our company, we hire based on three things, and three things alone: talent, character, and fit for the job. I don't care about anything else. Of our two-hundred-and-twenty-five employees, we have men, women, blacks, whites, Hispanic, Asian, Indian, South African. We have people who are Catholic, Jewish, Christian, Muslim, atheist, agnostic. There are gay men at our company, and there are lesbian women at our company. We've never had an issue in this room. But if this ordinance passes, I'd like to give you a scenario. I fire a covered employee for performance issues. That covered employee files a complaint, and the civil rights administrator shows up at my office. The administrator, in her sole discretion, in one person's sole discretion, decides if my actions were discriminatory and whether or not it merits referral to the city prosecutor. So I'm faced with a decision where I either have to rehire a person I fired for valid reasons, or face potential prosecution. So, I have some questions about this administrator, and I haven't heard anyone asking about that yet. What is her background? How many companies has she run? How long has she been in the business world? How many people has she hired and fired in her lifetime? I've hired and fired a lot. What makes this administrator qualified to pass judgment on employment situations? What are her biases? I'd like to know what her biases are. It boils down to, I don't want someone who has no experience in my world coming in and telling me how to run my business, who I can hire and who I can fire. To those of you who say this person has no power, I'll tell you, this is not only power, this is unbridled power. This is an arbitrary review by an unelected official who has virtually no accountability. This is undue interference in our system of free enterprise, and most of all, this is a deterrent to doing business in the city of Fayetteville. Now, you could make the argument that there's nothing to worry about if you're not discriminating, and I disagree. I don't discriminate. Come check out my company, and you'll see it. But I am concerned about these things: disgruntled employees that are fired for good cause who want to retaliate. We've just made it easy. Unqualified job applicants who don't get hired in the first place but file frivolous claims that make the news anyways, because you can darn well bet that this thing's going to get FOI, and there's going to be someone sitting in a chair right next to the administrator pushing the stuff out to the media right when it hits. Legal costs and massive amounts of time associated with defending frivolous claims. And there will be frivolous claims, and the numbers don't lie about that. Last year, eighty-three percent of employment discrimination claims brought to the EEOC were dismissed because they had no merit. Eighty-three percent. Whoever you put in this civil administrator, civil rights administrator role, you better hire someone good and someone who has a lot of hours, because they're going to get a lot of claims. Sadly, the result of this ordinance, which was drafted to protect certain individuals, will end up harming them. Business owners who have never discriminated in the past and who don't want to discriminate now will think twice about who they hire and about whether they want to be in Fayetteville at all. They're going to ask, "Do I want to subject myself to an inherently unfair process? Do I want to risk prosecution if a city employee disagrees with my actions? Do I want to put myself at the mercy of a czar who doesn't understand business? And do I want to be held to a higher standard than the federal and state government?" They're exempt from this. As a business owner, I'm now held to a higher standard than the federal government or the state government is. So what are the unintended consequences? Greater discrimination in the city, not less. More division in the city, not more diversity. Civil rights moving backward, not forward, and businesses who move to Springdale Rogers and Bentonville for a safer environment. Even people who fully support what you're trying to achieve with this ordinance can see the consequences coming. And several have gone on record as being against the ordinance even though they're fully in support of what you're doing. I'm going to talk about the law for one minute, and I don't have charts. I'll let someone else speak to the constitutional law problems, and I want to talk about state law specifically as it applies to employment discrimination. Section fourteen, forty-three, six-oh-one of the Arkansas Code states that "A municipality may legislate upon state affairs described in subdivision A-1 of this section if not in conflict with state law." And you may argue that it doesn't conflict with state law, it's just state law plus one. Well, the same statute speaks to that issue in subsection B-2A. It says municipalities shall have the authority to enact and establish standards, rules, or regulations that are equal to or greater than those established by the state, only where it's concerning emergency medical services. That's the only exception listed. If they meant for other exceptions to be there, they would have put them in. They put an exception in, and it's for emergency medical services. So state law plus one doesn't work under state law. But this isn't even state law plus one. I think this ordinance directly conflicts with state law. This is the Arkansas Civil Rights Act of nineteen ninety-three. This is the proposed ordinance in Fayetteville. They are not the same. I encourage you to read both of them. Cities cannot make laws on state affairs that conflict with state laws. Civil rights are a state affair. Even your city attorney has clearly stated, and I quote, "State law always, not sometimes, not every now and then, always trumps or controls over any city ordinance." You've said it at least five times tonight, members of the council. This ordinance should have never gotten this far, not because of the intent behind it, but because of how it is written. Don't pass an ordinance that violates state law. Last thing, and I'll be out of here. And I can't leave without speaking to this issue, because I'm very passionate about People who oppose this aren't automatically bigots, and it is not right to insinuate that. It's not right at all. I would challenge you to find anyone in this city who has lived around me the last forty-five years who would say I'm a bigot, because you will not find one. The business owner who is concerned about the negative effects of this ordinance is not a bigot. The grandmother who fears for the safety of her granddaughter is not a proponent of discrimination. The church pastor who wants to preserve the freedom of religion that our constitution protects does not have a heart of darkness. They are simply concerned, citizens of Fayetteville. And again, I want to thank you guys for taking the time to listen to all concerned citizens of Fayetteville, regardless of whether you agree with their opinions or not. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I come, talk about a little bit of the statutes you talked about? Fourteen forty-three, six-oh-one is entitled Municipal Affairs delineated. Under A-1, it says municipal affairs means all matters and affairs of government remain to affecting or concerning the municipality or the government, except the following, which are state affairs and subject to general laws of the state. And there, they list a whole bunch of different things, but they don't list anything about civil rights.
They do list letter G: hours, vacations, holidays, and other fringe benefits of employees. They list employment laws.
That's not a civil rights, and we're not affecting any of that stuff. We're not affecting, we're not setting hours, we're not setting vacations or holidays or other fringe benefits of employees. We are looking at passing a civil rights ordinance. And the civil rights ordinance does not absolutely match the civil rights statute in Arkansas, and it does not have to, because it is not a state affair. And when you went down there and said they could legislate on those state affairs if it's not directly contrary to, but we don't have to even follow that because it's not listed as a state affair. And the Town of Oak Grove case said that you have the right to legislate even if there's just a mere possibility of harm. And there was another thing that was read then, and it talked about how it had to be something absolutely necessary and vital to the affairs of the government to be able to do it. That was called a Dillon's Rule. But a few years ago, the legislature overturned the Dillon's Rule, and they said in fourteen, I mean, in forty-three, six-oh-two, the rule or decision known as Dillon's Rule is inapplicable to the municipal affairs of municipalities. So that case is even stronger now than it was when it was decided, because now, it's not only what's absolutely necessary, but what you and your judgment believe is proper. And so, I think that, you know, I'm not going to speak to whether or not you should pass the civil rights ordinance. That's not for me to say. But I will say that you have authority under the state law to do that. I think you have clear authority, not only under this statute, but other statutes we talked about that said you can execute your judgment for what's in the best interest for the citizens under the normal police power act. So you have at least two bases and separate statutes that gave you authority to do this. Now, whether you want to do it or not, that's up to you. Whether it's a perfect ordinance or not, that's still up to you. And I did not draft all of this ordinance. A lot of this ordinance came from outside the city, but I did look at it, and in my opinion, you do have the power to enact this ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, may I respond? Five seconds.
Yes, please.
Mr. Williams, I do not even pretend to be a better attorney than what you are. I quit practicing sixteen years ago because I was probably not a very good attorney. I needed to find something better to do. I would suggest getting an opinion of the Attorney General of the State of Arkansas on this, because I do think there are some significant conflicts. But I appreciate you listening.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Jordan, before I start speaking, I need to ask your leave. I'm speaking not in my personal capacity. I would be in my bed in Jonesboro, Arkansas right now. I would like to speak in the portion reserved for Fayetteville citizens, because they relied on me to speak on their behalf tonight.
We have, we've not been allowing that tonight.
I specifically asked the mayor for another attorney who is also representing Fayetteville citizens if he could do that, and we just didn't feel like it was fair. I'm sorry you have so far to go. I think the mayor's going to be following you there tomorrow at seven o'clock.
Yes, I'll be in Jonesboro tomorrow night.
I completely respect that. I guess I do just ask, when the council considers the testimony that I do offer on their behalf, I want you to know that they are Fayetteville citizens, and I would like it to be regarded as that instead of as outsiders.
We're going to hear from everybody, I promise.
Thank you.
Good evening.
My name is Paul Faniff, and I am a resident of Fayetteville, live at North Aqua Crossing. The problem that I have, and by the way, I have prepared remarks, because I didn't want to be chasing rabbits and taking a lot of time. I will be under five minutes.
Oh, that would be...
The problem I have with one-nineteen is that, in my opinion, the cure is worse than the disease. I too object to the characterization that opposing one-nineteen is to somehow be in favor of discrimination. That is not the case. I can't speak for anybody else, but I can tell you with absolute certainty, that is the case with me. I have three black grandchildren. I am not a bigot, and I despise discrimination. I know you've not said that, sir. I know, I realize that. But there has been a lot of mischaracterization, and there's an implication. And there has been a lot of people, and I don't mean tonight, just in conversation, there's a perception that if you oppose one-nineteen, you somehow favor discrimination. I don't, and I was merely giving you the reason why I don't. I believe that assaulting unalienable rights of all people to correct a perceived grievance of some is a false choice. There are other means of achieving desirable ends. Another thing is that I want to speak to the concept of natural rights. Natural rights apply to all people equally. They're not something that is granted by any government, nor is any government superior to natural rights. All governments, local, state, and federal, are subservient to natural rights. I would like to speak to the inevitable consequences of violating natural rights. God-given natural rights of man are the foundation upon which the pillars of individual rights are secured. They are those self-evident truths that the founders speak to in the Declaration of Independence. Two weeks ago, I cited Article II, Section twenty-four of the Arkansas Constitution, which states quite unambiguously, "No human authority, no human authority can in any case or manner whatsoever control or interfere with the right of conscience." That is our constitution. No human authority. The right of conscience is a natural right. It comes from God. It is unalienable. It is non-negotiable. The cost of capitulation for a free people is the loss of liberty. The state, in this case, the city of Fayetteville, cannot ignore that right without consequences. It is a law of nature confirmed by history. Article II, Section twenty-four is one of many acknowledgements of natural rights in the Arkansas Declaration of Rights. While all would acknowledge that any ordinance that violates... Your ears are probably tired, my mouth is tired. While all would acknowledge that any ordinance that violates the Constitution should plainly be perceived as unconstitutional, like ordinance one-nineteen, in my opinion, free men acknowledge and live by this truth: Any proposed law that violates the natural rights of men is no law at all. As George Washington said, "Government is not reason, it is not eloquence, it is force. Like fire, it is a dangerous servant and a fearsome master." Government is the lazy man's way of imposing his good intentions on other free people. It is oh-so-much easier to coerce than it is to persuade. It is oh-so-much easier to have someone else point the guns of government at your fellow man. Persuasion takes time, but it produces different results. It is a truism that a man convinced against his will is of the same opinion still. Coercion does not change people. It antagonizes them. A free society does not turn to coercion, to the use of government force as a primary utility for nonviolent objectives. Consider the harm to Fayetteville's image, stability, and prosperity. Should we have to stop locking up fathers, or pastors, or business people because they want to take actions that they believe will be protecting children? We don't want to have job creators leaving the city because of a potentially toxic risk environment. What will that do to Fayetteville's reputation? Forces outside of our city are seeking to set the rudder of the ship of our community. What do any of us have to gain by surrendering control over the cultural and legal environment of our community to those who will not be impacted by this ordinance? To my mind, ordinance chapter one-nineteen is an assault on individual and religious freedom. Again, I'll repeat Articles II, Section twenty-four: "No human authority can in any case or manner whatsoever control or interfere with the right of conscience." The fact is, that is the law of the land in Arkansas. And I suggest with respect that this body has no authority or jurisdiction to override it, and thus so at its own peril. Samuel Adams once wrote that "The right of freedom being the gift of Almighty God, it is not in the power of man to alienate this gift and voluntarily become a slave." Mayor, to me, this implies that it is unconscionable for a man or woman to voluntarily surrender rights granted to them by their Creator. This is my mind. This is my heart. My body, my soul, my spirit, they are a dominion over which I am the vassal king, subject only to my Creator. I believe this council has no authority to make any kind of a rule or law that sets itself above natural law. I believe that this council has no jurisdiction to do that. And may I suggest that there is no crime where there is no true law? Again, I emphasize, this is not to say that we don't have problems that we may want to address. What I'm suggesting is that the proper course of action is not to come up with a cure that is worse than the disease. I urge you, I implore you, for the well-being of the city of Fayetteville and the preservation of the rights of your neighbors whom you serve. Vote no on ordinance one-nineteen. Thank you.
Okay. That was a long five minutes.[1377.13][1377.13](laughing). Anyway, thank you, though.
Well, Mayor, I only have the front and the back, so maybe you'll... My name is Wendy Campbell. I live in Fayetteville. I'm in Ward One. I don't know if anyone thought of this, there might be an unintended consequence of one-nineteen point oh-three, which means that, or could mean, that a gay bar may have to hire a Christian band, and of course, that band would eventually share the gospel in their music. Maybe an unintended consequence, but I think it's something that the gay bar wouldn't want to do, and that's why I'm against ordinance one-nineteen, because I'm not for any individual, and I'm talking about individual, not an entity, an individual, to do something or to believe something against their conscience. There are a number of failures in the ordinance, but I will be speaking about the failure of public safety, and I will stick with that point. The reason I'm so passionate about public safety is that I was nearly abducted three times while growing up, and saved my little sister from being abducted at a mall. Every two minutes, somewhere in America, someone is sexually assaulted, according to the U.S. Department of Justice. One in three American women will be sexually abused during their lifetime. Section one-nineteen point oh-five says that facilities are included in the list of areas available to those who perceive themselves to be female, when in reality, they are male. And also, one-nineteen oh-two defines that in D, H, I, J, and M. The definition of facilities includes, it doesn't, bathrooms is just one issue. It also includes locker rooms, public showers, changing areas, and overnight sleeping areas and shelters, to name a few. This means that not only can a boy undress in front of a girl in a locker room because he believes himself to be a girl, but she will be forced to undress in front of him. I'm really thinking about the women's rights and the children's rights on this. Now, I know you passed an amendment, and I just have a couple extra notes on that, because I know you passed that. And I just want to say, we hold to the letter of the law and interpretation on that law. Not every lawyer, or judge, or officer sees things eye to eye. That is why wordage, the words that we use, is so extremely important. The word perceived is a problem. Still, in one-nineteen point oh-two D, a person could claim they are a woman in the women's bathroom or locker room, and just say, "Because I'm this way, I'm perceived to be this way," and we say, "No, you're not," that could be termed discriminatory. And the amendment still may not cover every scenario, such as being naked in a public shower. A boy can be in a girl's shower, thinking he's a girl, and it's not. It won't be considered indecent exposure, because he might not have a criminal intent. Furthermore, there is no protection for women until after a crime, and not all incidences are reported to the police. And I know earlier they said that a lot of times it's known people, that's a statistic that they've been putting it out, that people who hurt other people are mostly known, but according to the sheriff's website, a perpetrator will perpetrate on a number of levels, even unknown people. Even perpetrators that have never had a record before. Please rethink the verbiage, prevent the pathway for criminals to find a loophole in the law and take advantage. Not only will a man have access to women's shelters and sleeping quarters, but how would you feel if a pedophile disguised as a transgender was allowed to sleep next to your daughter or son? And I'm saying disguised because I'm not saying that everybody who's a gay, everybody who's a lesbian or whatever, that this is, they're like this. They're not. But they could come under that umbrella and be perceived a particular way, and that would be a problem, because it is a loophole. According to a legal brief on this ordinance, there's no protective mechanism in which to ensure public safety, but mostly to also prevent a violation of privacy. This ordinance is devastating to common decency and respect for the opposite sex. This ordinance is especially damaging because schoolgirls ages sixteen to nineteen are most likely to be victims of rape, attempted rape, or sexual assault, according to the Department of Justice. I spoke with a local police officer about the crime-free multi-housing program published on the access Fayetteville website. It says that we can reduce crime if we address these three elements: target, desire, and opportunity. Opportunity means not leaving a door open. Surely, you don't want to allow predators posing as transgender to take advantage of our private but public areas. The only way to accomplish this is by voting down the ordinance. The Washington County Sheriff's Office has official documents on their website referring to avoiding situations that allow easy access as a crime prevention tip. And this ordinance allows easy access, opposite of what we should do. When we open bathrooms, locker rooms, and shelters legally to people who are already accustomed to crossing boundaries, we significantly increase access to targeted victims. As another unintended consequence, I was looking at the sheriff's website, and it will need to be updated to include gender identity, gender expression, and sexual orientation amongst the other sex offender descriptions. Another tip on the website, I'm sorry, I can usually speak a lot faster than this, but I'm extremely tired. Thank you for being so patient. Frequently walk in. Now, this is so important, because if someone... Frequently walk in, now this is so important, because if someone actually frequently walks in on children or teens in the bathroom, and I'm quoting from the sheriff's website, allows children or teens to consistently get away with inappropriate behaviors. If the ordinance is passed and a male continues to go into a female restroom, for example, or a locker room, even though he claims to be a girl, could easily be perceived as a sexual predator based on that tip alone. Teenage boys will now have a legal way to get into a girl's locker room, bathroom, or shower claiming they are a girl based on the definitions provided in 119.02, Sections A, D, H, I, J, M, and 119.05. How will we then be able to stop children from getting away with these inappropriate behaviors? When school administrators have fears of anti-discrimination lawsuits due to this ordinance, but, oh, in 119.07, Section B, it exempts public school administrators but not private school administrators. So only private schools will be at risk. I don't get that. I was disgusted by a statement made that those who were concerned with sexual assault were trying to perpetrate fear upon the community.
Let's try not to get into the fear.
Either person, I just think that it is an issue, it is a very important issue, and that education is what helps people not be so fearful. I don't think that it's fearful for the sheriff's office to publish on their website different valid warnings. And I think we need to look at that, because even with the amendment, it doesn't, there's still loopholes there that do not fix the problem. Sexual assault includes exhibitionism. A male can exhibit himself quickly and easily by having access to bathrooms, locker rooms, shelters, and shelters of the opposite sex. All he needs is a few seconds. Only after a crime is committed do the laws apply. We need laws that prevent crime, not improve it. I believe that this ordinance fails prevention. There are 105 registered sex offenders in northwest Arkansas. What if they find out about this ordinance and they claim to be transgender, they claim to be, even though they're not? We don't want to increase the amounts of incidents in Fayetteville. We want to prevent crime in our city. I know someone had mentioned it before, but in Toronto, we had a law allowing, they had a law allowing a transgender to access facilities. He dressed up as a woman and gained access to women's shelters. And he perpetrated against women and scarred them for life. If you are telling yourself that something like that wouldn't happen in Fayetteville, let me tell you, it already has. And by passing this ordinance, it only escalates the probability that it will happen again. In Fayetteville, Walmart by the mall, a guy grabbed a little girl and carried her into the bathroom, and he did molest her. But if this ordinance passes, all he would have to do is go into the bathroom and wait for his target. We need to make sure that there are no loopholes. We have to make sure that it is safe. Giving cover for perpetrators is criminal. To think that a certain crime wouldn't be committed in this city is exactly what criminals want you to think. How would I know, or how would anyone know if they were looking at someone, if they were good or bad, they were dangerous or safe? Looks are deceiving. Laws are made to safeguard the proper boundaries of one another's property, possessions, and person. Please, again, look at it and make sure, because I believe that this ordinance as a whole fails a safety test. I also think, according to 119.02, Section D, that because of that word perceived, that a person would be able to create aliases under a whole, another whole slew of examples: name, race, gender, gender identity, veteran status, they could pretend to be a parent, they could pretend to be a pastor, because all they need to do to be perceived as such, even if it's not true. And my logic is, if it's not okay for someone to steal another person's identity, then why would it be okay to steal a gender identity, or the identity of another race, or a military or religious service? It's not. But because of the language in this ordinance, it would make it legal to do so. So please vote no. A person who was for this ordinance said that using the bathroom is a basic human function and denying that to a person is inhumane. And thank you, Mayor, for letting us go to the bathroom earlier. But I just want to say, no one is denying anyone use of a bathroom in Fayetteville. Men can use the men's and women can use the women's. No one is proposing that anyone be denied use. However, if a woman does not feel safe in the women's bathroom because a man is in there posing as a woman, she may perceive a threat and walk out, not knowing where to Some people say, it's just a bathroom, it's just a locker room, it's just this, get over it. Well, it's a changing area, it's places where you undress, it's a lot more than that. It's not just going to the bathroom. There's a whole lot of things that go on. Psychologically speaking, survivors of sexual assault never get over it. Never. It's totally offensive to think so. According to the Journal of American Medical Association, psychological symptoms and anxiety remain long after a crime. It's similar to PTSD. So approximately one out of three women who are sexually abused in their lifetime who come across an unpredictable situation like a man in the bathroom, or a boy in a girl's locker room, or even having a child undress in front of someone she's uncomfortable with at school, they will get traumatized all over again. Do we really want to put survivors through this? They've been through enough. We do not need to be putting our citizens in extremely awkward situations when it comes to the basic functions of life. People especially who are older or have disabilities deserve a space without risk factors. Many people with stress-related diseases need a calm environment without tension. Even a perceived threat with danger can trigger a severe episode for them. Many of these people are protected by the Americans with Disabilities Act, which may now need to be amended if this ordinance passes. This ordinance escalates stress and fails our most vulnerable. Lastly, I can only imagine what will happen in the future if this ordinance passes. First, people will turn their heads when they see a boy going into a girl's locker room, or a man into a woman's bathroom. But after desensitization, they won't even give it a second thought. And that's the most scariest thing to me, because society will no longer be looking out for one another for the fear of being sued, fined, or incarcerated. There's no civility in that. According to 11911, Section C, which refers to Fayetteville Code 1099 under Title I general provisions, this ordinance can not only fine you $500 for asking a man to leave a women's bathroom claiming such actions to be discriminatory, but also incarcerate you for 30 days as a misdemeanor and have an misdemeanor on your record if you fail to be reeducated. Honestly, it's a woman's right to use women's facilities and a man's right to use his. Please don't take that right away. Civil rights should be the right to be civil, even if we have to politely say no. And in my good conscience, there are times in which I would say no to someone. I wouldn't care about their feelings as much as the safety of an animal or a human being. I personally believe that God created male and female, and that bathrooms, locker rooms, and sleeping areas should remain separate. To force me to believe or act otherwise is against my conscience, against Arkansas State Constitution and the First Amendment. The great actor and President Ronald Reagan said, "Government's first duty is to protect the people, not run their lives." So please, protect women and children. Vote this ordinance down.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, I've got a suggestion. There are hundreds of people that want to talk tonight, and it's really not very fair to have people come up and speak for a very long time so that other people might not even be able to speak at all. I would suggest that the city council have some sort of reasonable time limit for the speakers that would be applicable to everybody here, so that everybody that wants to speak will be able to speak. We've heard people say this is going to be very short, and yet it goes on 15 minutes, and now it's 11:15.
Okay. What, how much time do you?
Three minutes.
Four, three minutes.
That was, that was an hour and a half for three people.
It was an hour and a half for three people.
Three minutes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we limit the time, timeframe for public comments to three minutes.
Just hang on now. How many, three minutes?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to limit it to three minutes. There we go. All right.
Are you ready for me to...
Go ahead.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Kenneth?
No.
Shopmark?
No.
Adam?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
No.
Marsh?
Yes.
That's five for three minutes, so the three-minute limit passed, and I guess it's going to be your responsibility, Mayor, to watch the old clock.
Oh. Give me just a second here. I gotta get this time just right.
Well, everybody breathe.
Okay. Now, I'm going to tell you, I'm going to, I'm going to watch this clock to the best of my ability. And when you got one minute left, I'm going to tell you, you got one minute. Everybody got that?
Yes, sir.
All right.
I wanted two minutes.
Hang on, just give me just a second here. Give me, give me a minute. All right, ready? Go.
My voting name is Margaret Conner. I go as Peggy Conner most of the time. I'm a citizen of Fayetteville for over 40 years. I've been a social worker, a teacher, a therapist. I'm a lesbian in a committed relationship of 23 years. I am going to try and speak here with a voice from each of these experiences. Nelson Mandela said, "We need to know with a fresh conviction that we all share a common humanity, and that our diversity is the world, in the world, is the strength for our future together." This is what we are saying to ourselves tonight, and to the citizens of Fayetteville, and to the world, when we pass this important piece of legislation. It says we are all one, we are connected, we are community. It says to LGBT people, you are whole, you are human, you are important. Times are difficult globally. We don't need to add more depression, more discouragement, or more anger to what's already here. It is becoming essential that we learn how to relate sanely in these difficult times. To those who say Fayetteville is already open enough, we don't need this ordinance, you've probably never been discriminated against, treated as a second or third-class citizen, threatened, bullied, or beaten because you were different. Fayetteville has always been a haven, a beacon of light. We are a real democracy here. People get to speak, some as long as they want, and be heard. There are televisions all over and radios of people listening. This is a democracy. Fayetteville is a proud place, and we should be. It is very important that we hear each other, and that's what we're all doing here tonight. But we need clarity, a sense of clear seeing and understanding, with respect and compassion for what we see and what we hear. Our diversity in the world is the strength for the future that we so desperately need, and that's why I support this ordinance. It is time for us all to come together on one earth to solve our problems with peace. We are in the process of going from a society that excludes any person who identifies as LGBT to one of inclusivity, treating them and seeing them as equal citizens. This requires tremendous bravery on the part of you, the city council. Now is the time for the Fayetteville City Council to pass this anti-discrimination ordinance. The future is the result of what we do here, right now. Thank you.
Okay. Give me, come on up. Go.
My name is Mary V. Cochran, and I'm a resident of Fayetteville, living at 101 West Fourth Street. I'm a grandmother to 11 and a great-grandmother of four and a half. For decades, my practice has been mostly in the GLBT community as a clinical psychologist. I want you to know that laws here, as well as everywhere in the United States, have procedures that allow people to change their gender from that of their birth gender so that they legally become a person of that new gender. A person born a woman can become a man legally, and a person born a woman can become, a male can become a female legally. So nothing in this ordinance can impact on that at all. So however, it does allow that the transgender people get equal protection under the law. Being a Quaker, and also having all of my grandchildren and great-grandchildren be either racially mixed or black, being a Quaker, I'm a very egalitarian person, and I believe that all of us should have equal rights, as we do in the eyes of the divine. In my practice, I have heard many stories of discrimination right here in Fayetteville. Usually, people involved are reluctant to pursue fairness, as they are required to be open about what they see to be private matters. They fear not only for themselves, but for those they are close to and love, their family and their friends. Please pass this ordinance to guarantee equal rights for all citizens of Fayetteville. Thank you.
Give me just a second here. Let me get that clock just right.
Mr. Mayor, my name is Janice Walters. There's a young lady back here that's handicapped that can't stand in line. I would like to let her come to the podium ahead of me, if I may.
Okay. Yes, ma'am. We'll start all over again once you get here. Okay.
Okay, sorry about that. My name is Laura Hampton. I live at 920 North Leopard Avenue in Fayetteville. I am hurting much less and much more coherent. We need this ordinance. And I have never felt less like a human being than I have tonight. I'm not exaggerating. As a disabled person, and also a trans person, some of the things I've heard, I don't even have good words. I certainly don't have good words in three minutes. The people that don't see the need for this ordinance probably have never been beaten, or emotionally, or verbally abused because of something beyond their control. So I can see how somebody who's never experienced this kind of pain and humiliation wouldn't see why we would need this ordinance. You know, I hear a lot of people talking about the consequences, you know, unintended consequences of what if this passes? Well, here's what's going to happen if it doesn't pass. Nothing is going to change. We are still all going to be afraid of retaliation, whether it be in our housing offices, our jobs, you know, the people around us. We're still going to be embarrassed. We're still going to be feared and misunderstood, because there is no excuse for ignorance in the age of the Internet. We have libraries, we have a beautiful public library over there that has Internet. There are so many groups working to make our problems known. There's no excuse for ignorance. And didn't we already do this when women wanted the right to vote? And didn't we already do this a couple of years ago, when my grandpa was in Vietnam and grandma was watching Mr. Martin Luther King Jr. on her TV? Just, oh, yes, for this ordinance. And for once, let's be on the right side of history, or else it's just going to repeat itself. Thank you so much for hearing me. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Go.
Good evening.
Again, my name is Janice Walters. I live in South Fayetteville, in Ward 1. Fayetteville is a city with many compassionate and fair-minded individuals. I am constantly impressed by the examples of kindness and compassion that I have witnessed in our great city. Yet it is those isolated incidents of oppression and discrimination that really concern me. I am concerned about the rights and safety of all of the... I am concerned about the rights and safety of all of the residents of Fayetteville and, in fact, our natural state of Arkansas. In response to the recent tragedy in Ferguson, Missouri, one of our city council members posted a comment on Facebook that I would like to quote. It said, "Staying silent when you witness oppression is the same as supporting oppression." Oppression and discrimination are very similar. So, I would say staying silent when you witness discrimination is the same as supporting discrimination. In light of that quote, I cannot remain silent because I have witnessed discrimination in the city of Fayetteville. I have experienced discrimination in the city of Fayetteville. When I served in the military in Vietnam, we were taught to be on high alert at all times because we did not know for sure who the enemy was and who was our friend. I'm glad that I learned that discipline because I feel that I have to be on high alert even here in Fayetteville. When I go to the grocery store, when I go to the mall, or when I go to the library, because I don't know who's going to be discriminating against me and oppressing me. That constant fear of potential discrimination really concerns me. We need to move beyond a culture of violence, oppression, and discrimination and create a compassionate world where we all are treated equally.
Time.
My time is up.
Time's up.
Thank you very much.
My name is Duncan Campbell. I'm a resident of, uh, Ward One. As I've read over this, uh, ordinance for the last two weeks and considered things, I wanna share, I, I came here tonight to, really to share this. I come as a citizen, but I'm also part of the, the business community and the faith community. I know a lot of pastors and I know a lot of believers in the city. I don't know anyone who hates the lesbians, the gays, and the transgenders. The ones I know don't know anybody. There are some people out there like that, but it's not most of the citizens of, of the city. The city is a great city. It is a diverse city. I've traveled to thirty-six countries. I've got friends, countries all over the world. I, I have great friends of many ethnicities. I don't discriminate against anyone, just like Mr. Turpin doesn't. And my friends don't either. And we would be the first to defend someone who is being abused or hurt in the other community. I don't like the labels either. If I'm against this ordinance, if my friends are against this ordinance, I wanna make a declaration. We are for civil rights, everyone in the city. We're not for special rights for one group, just like I'm not for special rights for senior citizens or special rights for, uh, uh, teenagers. This is different because it is scrambling over the normal aspect of what we have as civil rights and trying to, uh, get people to, 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 to violate their conscience in certain cases. Like, there's nothing in here, for example, for my friends who are pastors, if they do weddings across town, there's nothing that prevents them from mu, from having and requiring them to do a homosexual ceremony. And that's against their conscience. And I would just say this, um, demands from one community shouldn't become special rights for them. Many people are against the law, but it doesn't, they shouldn't have labels on them. And what I would recommend is this, don't take away the freedoms of everyone in order to give special rights to a few. I like people of all kinds and sorts. And here's what I would propose, if I can make a proposal.
You've got about fifteen seconds.
Vote this ordinance down. We've reached out to, 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 to the homosexual and gay community and so far, they have not responded. I would say, let's do a summit, let's have discussion instead of this ordinance.
I understand.
Thank you. My name is, uh, Alex. Once again, I live on, uh, Chaparral. Um, I just, once again, not a learned man, um, with the, the issue with pub, uh, private schools receiving funding, um, that's from my tax dollars, you know, from my property tax? Or is that, um, my yearly, I, I mean, is it a multitude of different sources, basically?
Basically, it would be, yes, any tax, uh, revenue source and it could be federal, state, or local.
Okay, so any money that, that I give to the government, basically?
Any tax, tax dollars.
Okay, my question is then, why is it that my tide dollars are now, I, I can't put my tide dollars where I want them? Because this is basically saying, hey, we don't want any of our money to go to somebody who doesn't support this. So, when we stop and look at the fact that we have to hire non-secular individuals in non-secular roles, who pays for that? It's not the tax dollars, it's my tide dollars that go to that church. No state funds go to the hiring of that individual. So, if, if you are now telling me that I can't choose where my tide dollars go because every church has a vote on who comes into their congregation and who is hired on and who is fired and so on and so forth. So, now you're making it to where I, as a congregation member, no longer have the right to vote the way that I want inside of my church with the funds that I deem that go to that church. So, so, once again, this is a oversight of not fully understanding what it is that we as congregational believers participate in, what we practice. And I feel it's a large oversight, um, and I know that-
One minute.
One minute, okay. I know that everybody's been here, we're tired, we're angry, we're just, we're just wanting to go home.
I'm not angry. I just gotta keep up.
Um, but, uh, I will mention, my wife, my phone is dead. I'm sorry I have not answered your calls, so please do not call the police thinking that I'm on the side of the road somewhere. Um, so, thank you all for your time, thank you all for your energy and your efforts, and, uh, I pray a blessing on all of y'all. And, uh, I'm gonna go ahead and leave and that's because I am tired, not from any other reason.
But, I might remember, remind the audience, if you've spoken, you're supposed to leave the room to let other people in the door where they can sit down. So, if you've spoken, you need to move on out.
Okay. Any-
We can, once we get in here so we're not congested.
Here's what we're gonna do. Everybody that spoke needs to leave the room and we'll move people in here the best we can. Okay?
Once again, any questions, comments, concerns?
No, you're timed up.
Write complaints, anything for me? Have a good one.
Hello, my name is Penelope Starobersky and I am, I live on three-twenty Burton Avenue. I'm fourteen years old. And I first started to like, I'd like to start out reading a letter from a former Fayettevillian, Casey Willis. Um, "Dear Fayetteville, I'm sorry that I cannot be with you tonight. I've been out of town for a bit over a year, but my heart is still there. I'm a product of Fayetteville, Lever Elementary, Ramey Junior High, Fayetteville High School, Troop One-S, One-Six, Saint Joseph and Saint Thomas Aquinas, and the University for both undergraduate and graduate studies. My parents still live in the house I was raised in and I still get most of my mail from there. I am out of town helping empower working-class communities through voter registration. And before tha, that, I was out of town helping elect the first outwoman to hold any office in North Florida. And before that, I was civil rights in West Virginia and Kentucky and the president campaigns in Georgia and Florida. I've been, I've even been to White, the White House briefing. I've been away from home, from my hometown many times, but it was always to do work to expand the power of average people to impact the world. I hope I've done Fayetteville proud. But all of these adventures nearly didn't occur. In November nineteen ninety-nine, just one short year after the defeat of the Human Dignity Resolution, I wrote a suicide note and made a plan. The day before Thanksgiving, the seventeen-year-old me couldn't imagine any kind of future as a gay person in Fayetteville. Nothing in my life gave me more hope and nothing in my community to, told me otherwise. The seventeen-year-old me was nearly the last version of me. At the hospital, they took away my belt and shoelaces-
You have one minute.
-and suicide watch. And even the shower without supervis, I couldn't even shower without supervision. Those two weeks saved my life, but it wasn't the time, the same time life as before. I found different life awaited me and I was excited for the hospital, excited the hospital and re-entered Fayetteville as a, an out-proud gay seventeen-year-old. I found help and found friends, I found myself, and I found my voice. We're all seventeen-year-olds, past, present, and future. I hope Fayetteville finds itself tonight. Please vote yes."
Thank you.
Go.
Go.
All right. Michael Collins here, the scene, uh, I live on the crime scene at Giles Road where an actual attack on me for su, supporting the opposition to this, or ordinance took place. And, uh, not hypothetical damage, real damage where my daughters are now living in fear, uh, thanks to this. Thanks to me speaking out. Thanks to us having civil discussion here. Speaking of civil discussion, I heard again fear and misinformation. I have the sources right here for, uh, Mr. Mayor, those on your council that told me that I had misinformation. I have it sourced, unless ABC News, NBC News, and, uh, well, maybe the Toronto Sun, who can trust them? But unless they're wrong, the information is right here. Again, I'll offer it to you and, uh, ask you to not use such inflammatory, or the council not to use inflammatory language like misinformation and fear when it's right here documented that people are using these ordinances to attack people and attack their violation, violate them, their privacy and their conscience. Um, I was gonna talk about natural law, uh, Paul did a good job, but what we're gonna talk about right now is the two new things that this ordinance does. First of all, it introduces criminality. So, if somebody, um, screws up, they're now not just, uh, liable with mon, monetary means, but they're now a criminal. Uh, that's new and people are bored to hear about it. We want three-minute limits? That's a pretty serious thing.
You have, yeah, well.
And then we also have a change, uh, a change in the civil rights now. Now behavior is included. Behavior, chosen behavior. I'm not talking about desires of the hearts, I'm talking about how those desires inside are communicated externally. I was born a rageaholic, that doesn't mean I get to drive like one. I have to control those urges. Last, I'd like to tell you, there will be, uh, disobedience to this.
Have one minute.
There was a CVP that posted online, I don't know who CVP is, they may be here. "You made the undeniable, undeniable implication that in order to use female facilities, you must wear female clothing." This is in regard to Kit's new, uh, new letter. "That is a bigoted statement. Clothing has nothing to do with gender. I will be wearing my usual clothes as I use women's restrooms from now on and I will be denying access to any man that wants to go to the bathroom with my child. Which one of us is right, Mr. Mayor? You've decided a new morality and you've thrust it upon us with this council, with this ordinance. If you vote yes on it, where was the trial? Where did truth get crucified on a cross and cast away? Where we have a new morality, a new morality, where those who stand up for the morality that we've understood for thousands of years is now not only wrong, but darkness." Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Ready?
Ready?
I am Phyllis Rangier. I live on Buchanan and I wanna thank you, Mayor and Council, for all you're doing. I'm here to support the anti-discrimination ordinance because I am against discrimination. I am a business owner, uh, in Fayetteville and like other business owners, we believe equality and fairness is good for business. It helps bring the best talent into our community. This ordinance will help attract the type of industry Fayetteville is vying for. Those companies look at schools, parks, trails, walkability, and livability. This ordinance will just add one more positive element to the equation. I'm gonna skip this other stuff. For someone to be given the same rights as me doesn't take anything away from me, it only enhances everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Gene Fulcher. I'm a twenty-year resident of this community. I wanna thank Mayor and the city council members for your service to our community and your patience and your desire to do what is best for Fayetteville. This ordinance is not about equal rights for all people, it's about special rights for specific people.
Oh, I'm sorry. Hang, I need to get your address.
Eighty-five forty West Forest Hills Drive.
Okay. I won't count that against your time.
Thank you. This ordinance is not about equal rights for all people, it's about special rights for specific people. We already have equal rights for all people here in Fayetteville. Our city is beautiful and it is diverse and is a great place to live. To imply that individuals are being discriminated against here in Fayetteville based on their race, gender, religion, or sexual orientation is to misrepresent the facts. Sixteen years ago, nineteen ninety-eight, the citizens of Fayetteville considered a similar city ordinance called the Human Dignity Resolution. This ordinance was soundly defeated then by a sizable majority of voters, fifty-eight percent to forty-two percent. It was the opinion of majority voters that the Human Dignity Resolution was not needed to guarantee equal rights in nineteen ninety-eight. And I believe that the majority of Fayetteville voters will determine that the ordinance before us is not needed to guarantee equal rights for all citizens today. What people do in their bedroom does not need to be discussed in the boardroom or in the workplace. The ordinance before us, if passed, could potentially cause more damage than good. It could lead to costly and unnecessary business restrictions, requirements, and lawsuits. This ordinance is not good for business and is not needed in Fayetteville. I urge you city council members and you Mayor Jordan to lay aside your personal preferences, disregard who makes the loudest noise on this topic, and focus not on what is desired by special interest groups, but focus on what is best for our children and our grandchildren. And if you do so, I think that you will vote against this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, Charlie.
My name's Charlie Watson. I live on eleven East Davidson, Davidson Street in Pitt, Arkansas. I woke up at three-thirty this morning with a terrible pain in my soul. Pain that I've had for forty-eight years, having been beaten by a teacher, discriminated because of my parents' politics. I understand how one who has no advocate feels. One, and, and this ordinance, as I've understood from the very beginning, not only includes the LGBT group who's, who has taken real beating tonight, but also nine other groups. And those, doesn't seem like we pay much attention to that, none is given in the media, other than mentioning them as being part of that ordinance. I commend you for coming forward with this ordinance that actually gives people a voice who won't be here because of their fear of further discrimination. And I do believe that it is a part of the responsibility of this governance to support this ordinance, to enforce it, to pass it. And when I look at the future of Fayetteville, because that's what I, I know this group, this body is doing, looking toward the future. We're making great investments in our schools. We're making investments in our parks, we're making investments in our trails, we're making investments in our entertainment venues. And we are trying to attract quality business to this area. And I believe that this ordinance is not a deterrent, I believe it's an asset. I encourage you to pass this ordinance.
Thank you. Thank you, Charlie.
I live at twenty-eight twenty-five East Weston Place in Fayetteville. I'm the president of ASME Local Nine-Sixty-Five, which is the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees. And last night, we passed a resolution, number fourteen-four, Fayetteville Nondiscrimination Ordinance. Whereas, and let me just tell you a brief history of ASME. This is a union that in nineteen sixty-eight, Martin Luther King Jr. came to support us with sanitation workers. So, that gives you a background of, of where we came from. Whereas, rooted in a history that uplifts the dignity of all work and every worker, ASME has been a leader among unions in supporting legal safeguards to protect the right and opportunity of all persons to be free from all discrimination, including discrimination based on, and then that's pretty much repeating- based on, and then that's pretty much repeating, uh, what Matthew had. Whereas AFME is committed to diversity and full participation, both within the union and in society as a whole. AFME specifically has supported the Civil Rights Act, the Voting Rights Act, the Equal Rights Amendment, the American with Disabilities Act, the Employment Non-Discrimination Act and legislation at all levels of government to guarantee the right of all persons to public and private employment, housing, credit, public accommodation and public services. And whereas, non-discrimination policies are good for economic development and the bottom line, creating more and better jobs. A June twenty-fourteen Williams Institute study found that ninety-eight percent of the top fifty Fortune companies have comprehension non-discrimination policies. And in twenty-eleven, a study showed that ninety-two percent mentioned economic benefits of those policies on recruitment and retention of the best talent, generating the best ideas and innovation from a diverse workforce, attracting a more diverse customer base, increasing productivity by making employees feel valued, comfortable at work and maintain-
One minute, Betty.
Okay. Maintaining positive morale. And so I'm gonna skip to the next one. Whereas AFME Local nine sixty-five remains dedicated to achieving the fullest exercise of civil, political, economic rights for all ci- citizens. That, I'm just gonna say, the members of AFME Local nine sixty-five support the proposed Fayetteville Non-Discrimination Ordin- Ordinance and urge the Mayor and the City Council to amend the city code by enacting chapter one nineteen Civil Rights to protect civil rights of Fayetteville citizens. So it has a little bit more in it, but I'm gonna end it there.
Well, you have a little bit of time, but-
So you guys have a, you guys hopefully will have a copy of that, but thank you.
Thank you, Betty.
Good evening. I'm John Ginn. I live at six eighty-five North Wilson Avenue in Fayetteville. Um, I know many of you personally, but for those of you that don't, uh, that don't know me, I am a white, middle-aged heterosexual man. I have been married to my wife for twenty years and am fortunate enough to have three children, um, living in the Wilson Park neighborhood. We live a very nice, middle-class existence. I rarely, if ever, am discriminated against. Please extend that experience to all citizens in the city of Fayetteville. I thank you for your time, I thank you for your courage. Please pass this ordinance.
Thank you, John.
My name is Jessica Stuckey. I live at Jessica Stuckey.
I'm having trouble hearing you.
Um, my name is Jessica Stuckey. I live at nineteen oh-nine East Overcrest Street here in Fayetteville. I'm here for two reasons. One, to thank you, uh, for knowing the boundaries of separation of church and state and for understanding that, um, regardless, the church is about a relationship in Christianity and inclusion, not exclusion. Uh, for two, knowing that predators and aggressors are not in direct relation to sexual orientation and that LGBT are neither pedophiles nor animals. And third, that you have come to this job before you unanimously and with the momentum to give this ordinance to move forward, to give everyone the same opportunity to make a life that I have as an affluent, white, married, hetero-normative, stay-at-home mom raising kids here in Fayetteville very happily. My second thing is that I really want to show this community that there are those of us who are Christian-hearted people, who are born into privilege of being just who we are, who stand with you and we are willing to see you as you see yourselves, uh, that we are confident that we can raise our children well, that we believe, uh, that we have better faith in our humanity and particularly our men, that we are not just rampant, wild, out-of-control human beings who cannot control ourselves. And also, um, that I want you to know that there are many of us and we are not few. And though I snuck out after my very traditional at-home life of nursing babies and watching on live stream, that I was able to come here, but that there are many of us and we stand with you. Please pass this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is David Whitaker. I live at seven seventeen North Lewis Avenue in the city of Fayetteville. Many of you know me. And if you do, you know that I'm a licensed attorney here in Arkansas and that I'm also a state representative, representing a big chunk of the city of Fayetteville. But I'm not here tonight in either of those capacities. I can tell you from my own personal experience and knowledge that you have one of the greatest minds, legal minds in municipal practice in this state, working for you already. I commend you to his advice. I'm here tonight because I'm also a homeowner. We raised, Lisa and I raised our two girls in this city. I am the son of the South. I grew up in the Red Clay Hills of Georgia and I remember the nineteen sixties. It occurs to me that in each generation, Americans are called to expand the definition of equality, to extend it to each and every one of our citizens a bit further than the generation before us. I could have stayed home. As a matter of fact, in nearly five years since I left the city attorney's office, I have, out of deference to you, you do a great job without me constantly meddling in your affairs. But this was an issue where I cannot sit on the sidelines. Our generation is called yet again to expand that definition. I am here tonight to ask you to stand with me and with history and extend civil rights to all of our citizens. Thank you and please pass this ordinance.
Thank you, David.
Am I supposed to say what my name is?
Need your name and address, please.
Okay. I'm Kima Wright.
Could you get closer to the mic?
Okay. There we go. Okay. My name is Kima Wright. Um, the first thing I'd like to say is that I actually have a friend who is gay and he is opposed to this ordinance. One of the reasons that he's opposed to this ordinance is because it puts one person over the whole city to be able to decide who isn't and who is discriminating. The problem that I have with that is how does that person, I mean, how is that person held accountable for whether or not they're discriminating themselves? You know? I mean, that's part of the problem that I have with it. Um, and I'm sorry, I get really nervous when I, um, speak. But, um, so that's one concern that I have is why place one person that is in charge of the entire city, who could be discriminatory themselves, you know? Um, it makes a lot more sense to have, you know, a board of people that come from every different, um, walk of life, if, if that is the case, if that, if it were to be passed, something like this were to be passed, then that would be, to me, that would be the logical course of action. So it, this really, uh, well, it scares me because people, everybody has some sort of discrimination about something and whether it's towards people or whether it's towards belief, you know? Um, almost everyone does in some way, in some form discriminate whether or not they want to admit it, you know? Um, so it concerns me that only one person is going to be involved in that.
You have one minute.
Okay. Okay. Um, the other thing that I wanna put forward is that, and this is really embarrassing to talk about, but I am a victim of sexual molestation and rape and it bothers me to know that that, those areas are not gonna be protected, you know? Um, that, and that if I, you know, if I have children, that I am gonna have to watch them like a hawk, you know, which technically I should be watching them anyhow, but, uh, not all, I mean, situations are going to, you know, allow for that and I would feel much more comfortable if I didn't have to worry about that.
I'm sorry, your time's up.
I'm Patty Mitchell. I live at three oh-seven East Sutton Street in Ward Two. I'm here tonight to ask you to vote in the affirmative for this ordinance because I believe that all of our citizens deserve equal protection under law. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Linda Burnett, eight oh-five Sunset Drive. To me, every individual is a minority and there's no smaller minority than every individual. Several people on the council tonight, after giving an explanation of what you were doing, said, "I have to vote according to my conscience. I have to vote what I think is right regardless of what happens." Someone earlier, wearing red, said, um, "The majority who don't understand," speaking of the people that oppose the, the proposed law. And I think that's true. A lot of us don't understand completely, but I also believe that they're, they do not understand, and many do not understand, who are not people of faith, just what that means to us. The subject of faith is unique. There are literally people dying around the world because someone had said to them, "You will change your faith or you will forfeit your life." And they have said, "So be it." Faith is one of the most intimate relationships that we have, the most unique intimate relationship, in my opinion, is our relationship with God. I would like to say that I believe it is always, always wrong to ask someone to violate their own conscience. To do so is to ask a human being to live without integrity. I don't believe you should force anyone to countenance something that they, it's, we're not talking philosophically disagree with.
You have one minute.
Thank you. But that they have deep, deep convictions about. I began by saying that everyone on the council voted their own conscience and I simply asked that you would give me the same privilege as a, as a minority of one. I would like to be able to live according to my own conscience with integrity.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is John Burnett. I spoke earlier, four five nine seven East Davis, Fayetteville. Um, as far as the three minutes goes, I just have some questions as far as how this ordinance is gonna affect me personally. Um, I have a garage apartment that I currently have a tenant in, uh, it's a, it's a girl that works with my wife, um, and she's renting the space. Um, I guess, from my point of view, um, as far as my objection, like, like, how does that affect me as far as if I have a garage apartment that I rent? How does this ordinance particularly affect me?
Well, if you don't discriminate against your tenant, it won't affect you at all.
Okay. Well, so, so, thank you. And so I guess my question would be, um, because of something, circumstances, um, in someone close to me that happened to them as a child, um, you might say this is discriminatory, but it's my house and it's actually on my property and I have three young kid, kids, six-year-old, four-year-old and a two-year-old. Um, and I'm not talking, it's, it's not a separate, I mean, it's on my property where my children are, um, and I've decided not to rent to men. Um, and so the reason behind that has to do with the fact, not, not LGBT or anything like that. I probably shouldn't have actually, but the reason behind that is because of some traumatic experiences as a child to where I say, "You know what?" I don't, it, maybe the fear's irrational, um, maybe it is, maybe it's not, um, but for whatever reason, because I believe that the welfare of my children are the most important thing to me. Um, so if I am going to do that, then now can I be placed under criminal charges, uh, and have a criminal record because of doing so?
You know, it's very difficult to tell and I do wanna point out that it's really not the civil rights administrator that makes any kind of final decision. That final decision, something like that, would be the elected district judge, who is gonna be, uh, next year Judge Story, who's been on the bench for twenty or so years. So it's not a lightweight out there and, and every case will be listened to and, and, and any reasons you might have for whatever, if somebody ever made a complaint, uh, you certainly be able to hear.
Okay. We've got less than a minute.
Okay. Well, I had another question.
Uh, you'll have, I'm on a-
That, that's fine. I guess, but from my particular point of view, it's, it's unique in the sense that, um, you know, if I, if I had to rent houses, you can't discriminate. I'm not talking about that. My particular instance, it's, this, this thing is so broad, where I, I believe that it even includes, it's, so for instance, I'm, I'm gonna face criminal prosecution then if, if I choose not to rent my guest house to a man. I, I'm just trying to make sure that, I'm trying to get some clarity to say, "Yes, indeed, that's the case." And if so, that for me is my own personal freedom to do with and what I will with my own property and that's, in and of that, that's why I'm so opposed to this. It's not, it's not necessarily this huge broader issue on that. I mean, I'm gonna-
I'm sorry, your time's up.
-oppose to other issues too.
Time's up, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Counselors, whatever.
Well, can I have an answer though, for the last question? Will, I mean, it, if this ordinance is enacted, will I be told, I, I, is it okay if I get an answer from, from your city attorney?
Yes, I'll go, go ahead.
There's a general exception for renting rooms, uh, out of your home where you're living there.
We don't share a kitchen or, it's, it's actually a separate, separate structure.
In that case, then the answer is yes, you would have to abide by the non-discrimination ordinance if it's not, if you're not sharing a kitchen or a bathroom.
In my own house?
It's not in your house, is it just-
Well, I know, but it's on, it's my house, I just have a guest house. So you're, you're telling me I don't get to pick and choose who I allow to rent my home?
I'm sorry, your time, I'm sorry, your time.
Okay. Uh, obviously.
Am I good to start?
Your time has begun.
Okay. My name is Justine Ternich. Um, I'm just returned here from Rogers. I've been a resident of Fayetteville for eight years, had a brief time up there, I'm still working up there. Um, I am thirty years old, transgender and a parent. Uh, there are many people in our community who are unable to speak with you today, not only because of the fear of public speaking, but also the fear of losing their jobs, their homes and their general safety. Uh, I'm, I've been standing before you today and divulging this information because it's necessary. And that really is the core of the transgender experience, necessity. Um, I did actually have a story from a friend of mine that, under the current constraints, I unfortunately cannot share. Um, fortunately, I am able to share my own and it is one that's not actually of discrimination, but of inclusion. Um, when I first applied for a job at the current company that I worked for, uh, I was very uncertain as to what sort of atmosphere I was gonna be walking into. So I buried my feelings deep and I applied as a man, as much as I've ever been one. Um, I lasted one month and eight days before I could no longer maintain that male charade. Um, I informed my managers that I am transgender and as I was the first transgender person they had worked with, there was a lot of uncertainty as to, um, you know, what reactions were gonna be like, what kind of changes could, you know, were gonna happen, um, you know, as a result of this. It was ultimately settled that I would be issued a name badge with my preferred name and that the safest restroom for me to use would be the single stall family restroom located in the back of the store, which was excruciating. The combination of immobility from my workstation, the restroom being constantly occupied and my medications requiring frequent use-
You have one minute.
-facilities, yes, sir, was intolerable. After a couple of miserable months, I had my name and gender legally changed and I gathered the courage to ask for more. After consulting the company policy on transgender restroom use and conferring with human resources, my manager was informed that I could not currently use the limited room. In the end, morality won. She realized that the idea of me- In the end, morality won. She realized that the idea of me using the men's room was ridiculous, and that the inaccessibility of the family restroom rendered that option moot. Thus, I was granted uncontested access to the women's restroom. The lack of complaints made since that moment regarding that decision speaks volumes. In addition to moving back here, I would really like to resume working here as well. Unfortunately, by relocating, I risked the access to my rights and the basic human dignity that I have fought so hard to establish. So please pass this ordinance, because I really don't want to have to make-
Time's up.
Mr. Mayor, my name is Dwight Gonzalez.
Hang on just a second, I want, I need some clarification here. People ask questions, and the city attorneys responding to a question or a council member, do they get extra time? Do you want me to keep that within the three-minute time limit?
I would like, I would like for you to allow them to have that time.
Okay. So if they ask questions, then we take more time than the three minutes?
That's just my opinion.
I need to know what you all want me to do. Okay, that gentleman I just had leave the room had questions for council member. If he's still here, would you please come back in here then? We're going to do this a little different. Now, if the, if the public has questions, we will take the time to answer your questions, okay?
But not unlimited questions, Mayor.
Well, I'm just saying, I need some clar, I'm just running the meeting here and keeping up with the law.
We're trying to make nice people following you so they won't have to be up so late, and they can, and they can talk to it.
Right.
So, again, that was, that was the question I was asking on my property.
The question, and the answer is that this is going to be a complaint-driven ordinance, in other words, so if you have somebody that says, "Oh, I wanted to go in and rent from him," and he said, "I'm not renting to you because you're a man," well then, that complaint seems pretty valid, and so you might, if you decide that you have no other reason except for his sex or his gender not to rent to him, then, then that is something that you might, might be prosecuted for.
Okay.
And if you're prosecuted, the judge might say, "You're guilty."
Wait a minute, don't start engaging from the audience.
So even though, even though it's not like, it's, the house is actually on the property, and it is ten feet, my guest house is ten feet from my door, you're still saying that you guys would have control over who I choose and choose not to, if you deem it to be discriminatory? I, so yes, the answer is yes, thank you for that. I had, did have one other question that you said-
I'd like to clarify very quickly. According to current fair housing laws, my understanding that for the protected classes that exist under fair housing law, you would be subject to the same sorts of protections that we're recommending in this ordinance. We're merely extending those to some new protected classes. And so, it is absolutely the case that today, you could not say to somebody, "I will not rent that room to you because you're black, or because you're a man, or because you're a Muslim."
Right.
And so, we're merely extending that exact same protection.
Do not engage from the audience, please.
Now, would I face criminal prosecution under the current ordinance?
I'm sorry.
Matthew, would, are you saying that I would face criminal prosecution under the current ordinance? Because my, my understanding is that I would not, for not renting to a man.
This is a criminal ordinance, subject to maximum fine, yes.
No, this ordinance, I'm saying, you are saying that as the law stands right now, it'd be subject. I'm asking you, as the law stands right now, is it a criminal offense?
No.
Okay, so it, so it does elevate, for instance, me saying, because I was sexually abused as a child by men, I don't want men around my kids who live in my house, this guest house is part of my house, I've chosen, because it's my property, not to rent. You're saying that that then is elevated to a criminal offense, correct? By me choosing to do so?
I'd have to defer to an attorney for the specifics.
Okay. And then, I'm, I had, did have one other question, and it, it was just in regards, honestly, because there's a lot of confusion, because there's people saying this and that, in regards to the restroom's gender, whether it's you trying to do something unlawful or not, for instance, the U of A shower room-
Mr. Mayor, you know, Adella wanted to extend more time, but this is going to defeat the entire three-minute limit if you allow extended discourse.
It'll take me twenty seconds.
I'm just asking.
Twenty-second question, because I, I'm confused. I truly don't understand what, where the stance is on that. It hasn't been made clear. I'm at the U of A, it's a big shower room, my wife at the high, she went swimming, my wife and daughter in there, a gentleman that's transgender comes in there, he's not intending to do any harm, is that legal under this ordinance?
The university is not covered at all by this ordinance, has no effect.
Okay, Babe Athletic Club.
That's your answer.
Babe Athletic Club.
I think we've done enough.
Okay, so, I would say thank you, but I didn't end up with an answer, so your time is appreciated.
Okay.
Mayor Jordan, my name is Dwight Gonzalez. I live in Ward One on Skelton Street. I really do appreciate staying up. It is now my birthday.
Yay!
So, I didn't get to jump up to the other line, I am a father.
We're all having a birthday tonight, don't we?
My wife and I moved here two years ago into Fayetteville with our five children. I, we're expecting our sixth. I could go into the many different aspects of this bill while I am against it, though I am not against civil liberties at all. I, being a perceived white man with the last name Gonzalez, being a Native American, I have been discriminated against a lot. However, I cannot control if it, somebody does not like me. And I cannot dictate the other, the conscience of another man, just like they can't dictate the conscience of my heart. What I do have a problem with is the First Amendment rights that are being taken away from everybody and used to, to show us as discriminatory when really we're not. We would, most of us would have no, no problem with this bill if our First Amendment rights weren't being taken away. Public schools are exempt, but now my children, I just put them, just, they've homeschooled for all their life, just put them in private school, but now that private school is not exempt, but it was exempt, but now it's not.
Calm down.
And, I'm sorry, I'm a preacher, so I get kind of excited.
It's all right.
And so, so now that that public school, that that private school gets public funds, are they now exempt as all other public schools are? That's my question to you, Mr. Williams.
No, the public schools are exempt because we simply do not have any jurisdiction to regulate them. They're regulated by their own school board and also by the state, and therefore, in my opinion, this ordinance as was originally presented would have had us regulate them, and my opinion was, we did not have the power to regulate them, and I did not want, so I, so that was removed. That is not the same for public school, I mean, for a private school. So I think that that's the reason that private schools are still within the power to be regulated, and therefore, they were not removed.
Well, this, this board does not control Fayetteville Public Schools.
Okay, we've got about one more minute.
And, and now, because you say they don't control that board, you don't control the private school, but now the, the private school that I just put my children in is now in this bill. So when does my rights keep getting taken away? I've been discriminated against because I homeschooled my children. I've been discriminated against because I don't vaccinate my children. I've been discriminated against, and my rights as a, as an American male are being taken away solely for surely, so that others can feel safer, when really I feel like I need to move. And Mayor Jordan, I thought this was a nice place to live, and yet now, I have to uproot my family and move back to Farmington, where I can feel like I can follow the dictates of my heart.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Ally Kirkpatrick, and I live on Madison Drive in Fayetteville. It was really difficult to come here tonight, because I do have family and friends who are gay and whom I love very much. However, my religious values don't allow me to support Proposition 119, and that's not to say I don't think that they should have rights, especially in partnerships, but I don't agree with the way this bill is currently worded. And the part that I'm going to especially pick on is the part that would require providers for weddings, such as florists or bakers, which I am one, to provide services for unions that they don't feel religiously supportive of. And so, when I read that, I see that someone is getting a right, but it's trampling all over the ones that I have right now. And I disagree with that, and I ask you to take that into consideration when you do vote tonight.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Stewart. I'm from here in Fayetteville. I've been a resident of Fayetteville for the past four and a half years now. I'm a writer, a chef, a Christian, and I'm transgender. I had one story I had thought about saying tonight, but due to time constraints, I'm just going to mention a couple of smaller things that have stuck out to me tonight. I've heard a lot of talk about equal rights, and I've heard a lot of talk about special rights. Personally, I don't know anything about any special rights other than the exemptions that I've heard being made tonight. What I do know and can attest to is things that have been said to me here in Fayetteville and northwest Arkansas, is that being asked to leave an establishment here in the city of Fayetteville, in the words of the establishment's owner, "Freaks like that make people uncomfortable. They're just like midgets, and they never should be allowed inside." I have also been told by one of my own coworkers that LGBT people are just like child molesters, and that if it was up to him, we'd be taken out and shot. I'd like to think that sentiments like that don't speak for the majority of anybody in this room on either side of the issue, but when sentiments like that are expressed so strongly, it, it can be very frightening. I hear a lot of-
You have one minute.
I've heard a lot of concern about bathroom safety. All I can say to that is that we go to the restroom to do the same things as anybody else, and sending a transgender woman into a men's restroom puts us at risk of sexual assault and rape. That is an experience that I would prefer not to have again, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Kyle Smith. I live at 2801 Dove Drive, Ward Four. I'm a high school math teacher, and I would like to berate you with some numbers, just like I did my class earlier today. Two things I will promise, I will still be talking at the bell, and my charts are small. Two hundred is my first number. There are two hundred cities nationwide with ordinances similar to this one, big, successful cities, hip college towns, growing cities full of economic potential. These are the cities that Fayetteville compares itself to. Our Chamber website tells several reports, Fayetteville is number seven on Kiplinger's 2009 Best Cities list. Five out of the six cities ahead of us were on this list. Livability, that was a recent one I saw on Facebook. Top ten college towns, we were number nine. All eight ahead of us were on this list. Sixty-three, oop, sorry, I skipped a couple pages. Ninety-one. Ninety-one percent of the Fortune 500 companies have nondiscrimination employment policies. Forty-nine out of the top fifty have already committed to what we're asking of our local businesses. These are the biggest, most successful companies in the country. They know what's good for business, and this is it. Furthermore, most of them are headquartered in one of those cities on the previous page that already have ordinances like this one. It doesn't matter how much we say bad for business, the evidence says otherwise. Sixty-three. The HRC Youth Survey report said that sixty-three percent of LGBT youth say that they will have to move out of their hometown to find acceptance as adults. That's more than twice the rate of their straight peers, and that is directly related to the environment and culture that we create through city policy. We have the best public and charter, sorry, my employer would prefer I say, "We have one of the best public schools and charter schools in the state." If our youth feel that they have to go elsewhere to find happiness, then our educational tax dollars are just draining some other city's employees. If you want to talk about bad for business, let's talk about creative class brain drain. You met a lot of those students tonight. There were plenty more outside, I couldn't count them all. This anti-discrimination ordinance won't end teenage angst, but it sets a tone for the community, sends the signal to the rest of the world that when they move from their home to find happiness, they can come here and be welcome. They're welcome to stay here and raise their, their family to be the next generation Fayetteville. I could cover some more, but I'm going to run out of time. There's my bell.
Hello, Mayor. John Latour from 112 West Center Street. I'd like to talk to you about the adverse effects that this ordinance will have on business. Mr. Turpin did a very adequate job of describing the animus between this ordinance and business. As a businessman for making a wise business decision, I can be criminally prosecuted because I fired the wrong person. That shouldn't be, Mr. Williams, our mayor. We should not make it criminal for a businessman to make an everyday, routine decision. This city has a bad reputation with business. We don't want to make that worse, we want to make it more friendly. In a conversation with one of our former school board presidents, he was complaining about how we citizens have kept voting down the millage increase he was trying to get to build a new high school. It's been built now. I said, "Yes, we do vote down the millage increases, but look at all the new neighborhoods around. You have a bigger tax base, so you should be getting more money." He wisely pointed out, "Yes, for every new neighborhood, I get new tax dollars, but I'll also get new students, so those, there is no net gain." What he said was, "I need commercial development, so I get tax dollars, no new students." I said, this is to your predecessor, "Tell that to the mayor." He said, "I did." See, it's that sort of thing, when we try to do so good in one area, but we shoot ourselves in the foot in another area. Our schools will suffer as commercial development moves north. We need commercial development here. Cracker Barrel sits in Springdale today, not in LKX, where it was originally planned. The construction supervisor for that project stated, "If Fayetteville could give us the land, we would still build in Springdale, not because of the sign ordinance, but because of the attitude of the city government." That needs to change. We need to develop a friendly relationship with business. That's what I'd like to see happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor. My name is Lowell Grisham. I live at 310 North Washington Avenue. I'm the rector of St. Paul's Episcopal Church here in Fayetteville. 1954, four days after the Brown versus Board of Education decision, School Board of Fayetteville made a historic and very brave decision to integrate our public schools, and that fall, they did so beautifully without problems, and it's in our DNA to make these kinds of decisions. This is the kind of town that we are in. Many of you know that our church chose to bless our committed same-sex couples a number of years ago very publicly, and because we're known as a place that it's safe for people to come out of the closet, I've heard a lot of stories. I've heard stories from people who've been beaten up, threatened, bullied, followed menacingly as they left a restaurant or public place. I've heard stories of people who've been fired, who have been passed over or not hired when their qualifications or their performance was excellent. I've heard stories of people who've been kicked out of a residence, people who've been refused a lease. One couple who just simply didn't get service when they sat in a restaurant, as a gay couple. Just this week, a friend told me a story about a house renovation project. He and his partner were contemplating. They asked their bank to come and give them an assessment so that they could get a loan. One of them was outside when the assessor came. He said, "My partner's in the house, he can show you around," and he said, "I saw that look." And sure enough, the assessment came back much, much lower than they could have ever imagined in that neighborhood, and they canceled the project. He called a friend in the bank, and he said, "You know, it's a big bank, it's hard to make these things turn around. There are other banks, so why don't you try another one?" He went to another bank, and-
One minute, Lowell.
He got a, they got an assessment that was fully one-third more than the previous one, allowed them to do their project. I think this is the kind, let me mention one other thing. I'm old enough to remember the segregation days, and when desegregation happened in Mississippi, good people, the parents of all my friends, were so afraid. And the three things they were afraid of: interracial romance, swimming pools, and restrooms. How familiar these fears sound today. People who had those fears now are a little embarrassed by them. are a little embarrassed by them. I know the children of Hal Douglas and that school board that made that brave decision in eight, nineteen fifty-four. You want your children to be proud of you. Make a good decision in the history and, 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 and the spirit of this great city. Thank you.
Thank you, Lowell.
Hello, my name is Josh Waters. I live in Rockford Drive here in Fayetteville in Ward Four. Um, at the last council meeting, there is a call for compassionate people of Fayetteville who are against discrimination to come and speak out, and that's why I'm here today. I believe someone should not be denied a job because of the person they love. I don't think it's right that someone is denied service at a restaurant simply because of how they look, such as their gender identity. Discrimination based on sexual orientation, gender, or identity just seems wrong to me. That being said, I must rise in opposition to this proposed ordinance. Though well-intentioned, this ordinance will discriminate against one group of people to try and protect other groups of people through government coercion. Freedom and liberty for all is always better for all. Growing up in the most tolerant and accepting generation of history has been a huge blessing for me. I am grateful for growing up with such a diverse group of friends with differing beliefs, backgrounds, religions, and cultures. Being gay or straight, Christian or atheist, foreigner American, or whatever else may separate us initially, no longer separates it, separates us like it has in past generations. My generation has truly begun seeing each other because of the content of our character. This ordinance sets us back from the progress that has been made. It sets up boundaries and further dissects us into defined groups. It provides a government bureaucrat to try and divide us rather than allowing us the opportunity as a city to unite despite our differences. This ordinance tries to tie down religious groups to the four corners of their places of worship. This creates a substantial burden on the religious groups to live out their faith in all respects of their lives. To me, this brings, brings up a potential violation of the Religious Freedom and Restoration Act. RIFRA states that government may not, through a law of general applicability, substantially burden the free exercise of a person's religion. This act does in fact substantially burden the free exercise of religion. This ordinance is the government, this ordinance is the government coming in and telling a private business, religious group, or private individual who they may hire, fire, rent, or sell property to and who can use their public restaurants. In essence, it is trying to force upon one group of people the beliefs and values of another through government coercion. It completely strips the opportunity of choice from the private individuals. It has the potential to undermine all groups' purposes, missions, and beliefs. Um, due to time, I'll, I'll just go on. Um, one aspect that was talked about was the fiscal aspect of taking this to about thirty thousand dollars. Um, I had a scenario I wanted to present, and in that scenario, it'd be five lawyers working on this at a rate of two hundred dollars an hour. In one week alone, um, five lawyers, thirty hours a week, would be thirty thousand dollars. Within a year to two years, which I would think a case, the cases that are gonna follow if this is passed, will be one point four million to two point eight million. Um, so fiscal responsibility, it would-
Tom.
Please don't know.
Uh, good evening, or should I say good morning? Uh, my name is Maria Rice. I live at eighteen nineteen North Hunters Ridge, uh, here in Fayetteville, Arkansas. Um, and I'm a, a proud, uh, native, uh, here of Fayetteville. Um, graduated, uh, just down the street, uh, from the Cowboys and Fayetteville High School, um, and my family has proudly called this home for, for many years. Um, I'm here today because of, uh, comments that have already, uh, been made, uh, that this ordinance really has a broader context than just one group of individuals, um, towards which we've spent the majority of the conversation of this evening. Um, as a Mexican-American that grew up here in Arkansas and currently as an individual that directs Arkansas's largest immigrant rights advocacy group, I'm here to say as well that we have seven thousand ethnic minorities here in Fayetteville that sure would appreciate you all making the right decision to support this ordinance. Um, for us immigrants in Arkansas, um, I can say that, uh, this story, the stories that we've heard this evening are, are something that resonate with us, um, that even resonated with myself. Um, growing up here in Fayetteville, where my family proudly, uh, called this place home, I still do remember a time going to school here, uh, when children would come up to me, my classmates, and say, "I'm sorry, we can't play at your house, uh, because your mother is Mexican," and my parents told, uh, "She has a disease, and so, uh, we're afraid that we would also get sick." Uh, my nickname growing up, uh, throughout school was, uh, "Mexican Monkey" because they associated Mexicans here in Fayetteville with animals. Uh, and I can't tell you how much it saddens me right now, um, serving as the first Latina on the State Board of Education for Arkansas and the first Latino in our state, uh, that has votes at the state level on policy, uh, to hear that kids, youth, uh, and members of our society are still framed in this context and considered in any way, uh, second-rate citizens or, or less than human. Um, if I could bring one more argument to the table, it would be this. Uh, Arkansas is only one of two states that lacks a Human and Civil Rights Commission. Uh, we are only one of two states next to Mississippi that does not offer at the state level accountability on civil and human rights violations, and because of, uh, state law that was passed that prohibits the creation of an independent commission, then this really has to be addressed at the state level. Um, so I thank you all for your time and your service to our city this evening, and, uh, once again, uh, on behalf of all of us in Fayetteville, uh, we sure do hope that you'll support this ordinance. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Noah Meeks. I live, uh, on Skyline Drive here in Fayetteville. I'm here, um, primarily as a transgender man. Uh, we've heard a little concern, a lot of concern about kids and bathrooms, particularly kids and women in bathrooms, and I wanted to talk about my experiences with bathrooms, which started when I was five and I was told that I was going into the wrong bathroom, uh, by a janitor at my elementary school. I was, uh, trying to go in the girls' room, which was where I thought I belonged. Um, I was ten when some girls who were in 4H with me climbed up on the toilets and stalls on either side of me, uh, in a bathroom, uh, so that they could violate my privacy and harass me. Um, throughout my life, when I was going in and out of bathrooms, um, women were very uncomfortable. They would stop and check the signs on the door, uh, because they weren't sure they were in the right bathroom. Uh, and right up until, you know, I began my physical transition in my twenties, you know, I would have people come up to me and say, "Do you know you're in the women's room?" Uh, so, you know, this-
You have one minute.
Thank you. Uh, this ordinance probably would not have prevented any of that because I didn't have words for what was different about me until I was in my twenties, but what this ordinance would do is let me breathe a little easier when I go into the bathroom where I feel comfortable and where other people are comfortable with me. Since I've started using men's rooms, no one has once questioned my right to be there. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, my name is Greg Jones. I live on Whittington Drive. Um, I'm also a combat veteran, and I wanted to share with all of you, and, and I've shared with some of the council members already, when I was in Iraq, we, uh, we were serving during a time that they held one of their first elections. This was a very important time for those people. And it wasn't because they were allowed to vote. The pride I saw in the people was not because they were allowed to, 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 their party may be able to win. It was that they had an opinion. They had a right. They could act in their conscience without fear of the government telling them that this is a crime and they would be punished for it. I learned something over the past few weeks I did not know. There is discrimination in the city. Guaranteed, I found this out. And that's sad. However, are you willing to enact police powers to regulate someone's thoughts? It's a dangerous line on which we walk to do so. Because I knew pride because I had an opinion. And when you're willing to take that opinion away, it becomes dangerous. And in this, in this city ordinance, you tend to want to govern people's conscience and their free thought. There has to be a better way to handle discrimination than to criminalize other people's thoughts. I think there is. I've had several conversations with people, uh, of the community that, that are, uh, covered in this, in this ordinance, that, that feel there is discrimination. But a lot of people, including a young man I served with, who was homosexual and was there, and if he was able to be here today, he would say, "Don't tarnish what I did."
You have one minute.
"Don't tarnish what I did to give liberty to other people." Under some farce, the, 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 we call a city ordinance that totally goes against our nation and our state constitution. People have a conscience. We have to be able to find a way without robbing people of their conscience. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeremy Flanagan, uh, Cannadel Drive, Fayetteville. I, uh, just briefly, I, uh, also think back to nineteen fifty-four, although not to take anything away from Fayetteville, I grew up in Charleston, Arkansas, who, uh, was the first school to desegregate, uh, from, uh, all grades in the South, and actually had two of my family members that were the legal counsel and, uh, leading the school board in that effort. Proud of that. Um, proud of that. And so it, it does bother me when we disagree with this and if we do so, and that we are told that we discriminate against, um, you know, any and everyone. That's, uh, assumed just to be. Um, one of the problems I see with this and, uh, you know, and, and people have talked about outside organizations coming in and supporting this, um, the, the Human Rights Campaign, uh, I don't know, and I would love this, this, you know, this council has said they're going to act with boldness and make a decision and not put it to the voters. I have a couple of questions I'll end up leaving you with. Um, but the Human Rights Campaign, um, who's, um, very much involved in this and putting this legislation forward, um, you know, they, uh, "A fair Fayetteville," and the problem is, is at the end of this vote, I, somebody is going to feel that this is not fair. There is really with, with this vote that someone will feel it's not fair, and, and that's not a good place to be for any of us. Um, absolutely, and a person, about four or five people in front of me, uh, transgender women are absolutely the most-
You have one minute.
Yes, the most, um, attacked and discriminated against, but I can tell you that with the, the hundreds of those that will be affected and are constantly affected, you have tens and thousands of, of women who feel uncomfortable with, with, uh, you know, um, men, whether they're transgender women and still, um, you know, having, uh, those, um, uh, those characteristics, that they will feel that this is unfair. Um, I'll just leave it with you. I would, I would love to know whether or not we approached as a council the Human Rights Campaign or whether they approached us, and I'll ask the same question I've asked for two weeks, multiple places. What do, in the, in the guise of employment and housing, and you would be probably surprised at some of my views on that, um, but I can't get past the First Amendment and the, and the gender identity issue, but what for employment and housing do sexual orientation and do gender expression not cover that gender
Good morning. I'm Dale Manning, and I've lived in Fayetteville for the last forty years. I live on North Valencia. Uh, you may have noticed a small rabbit in a red shirt up here with a few of us and wondered, "What's up with this bunny?" It's my pleasure to introduce you to Opal. Opal here has become somewhat of a mascot for the Fayetteville transgender community today. Fayetteville has a large population of rabbits right here in the city limits. They can be found in yards and in bushes and in the public green spaces, finding a way to both survive and thrive in our suburban atmosphere. Rabbits in nature are skittish creatures with keen senses and alert, and alert to them to approaching predators. Rabbits live their lives in fear, fear of hawks, owls, coyotes, dogs, and even humans. Rabbits are so accustomed to living in fear that their bodies have adapted to it, evolving strong hind legs for running away and long ears for increased awareness of approaching predators. The transgender community of Fayetteville understands this sense of lifelong fear all too well. Fear of losing our homes or jobs, and now that so many contrasting viewpoints about discrimination have come out recently, many of us fear bodily harm and maybe even death for something as simple as using the restroom or walking down the street. Recent estimates suggest that there are approximately fifty transgender people living and working in the Fayetteville area, yet only a small number were willing to take the risk of being seen here today. For us, Opal represents not only the constant state of fear, but also the ability to survive and thrive despite the threats we may face, we feel we may face. Opal has come here today so that no one has to stand up here alone. I am a whole person and so is she. Thank you for your time and attention.
Mr. Mayor, my name is Leslie Beldon, and I live at 504 East Lafayette Street in Fayetteville. Um, I'm also, um, a minister of Word and Sacrament, a pastor in the Presbyterian Church USA. I've been, uh, resident, a voter here in Fayetteville for nineteen years and, uh, and, and was here when, when the Human Dignity Ordinance came up last time. I hadn't been here long and I was, uh, surprised that it became such a significant, uh, issue within the faith community. Uh, I went to seminary at Louisville Seminary, and, uh, I, I do not speak for my congregation because our congregation, as, as well as the Presbyterian Church, is a, has a big umbrella, and, uh, the discussion about what is sinful, what is wrong in the eyes of God, uh, people of good conscience differ, uh, just as Christians and Jews and Muslims di- differ on, on what is right and, and what is wrong. But the Presbyterian Church USA, uh, which, which struggles with the issue of, of what is wrong, uh, in the, in the eyes of God as it pertains to, to homosexuality and, and differs among people, has been very strong for, for decades in that regardless of what any church or any denomination may call sin, discrimination is wrong for any reason at all. So, and not, in the nineties, when I lived in Louisville, Kentucky, I was very proud that our, our national denominational headquarters was in Louisville, Kentucky, a city that is twenty-five percent Roman Catholic, and that the Presbyterians and the Catholics came together and worked together, marching on the city government to encourage-
You have one minute, listen.
-to encourage the city government of the city of Louisville to pass an ordinance very similar to this one that is still thriving, and, and that city has, has thrived under this. Uh, for me, it is, we, we will always differ on matters of religion, but fairness, uh, and, and not discriminating against anyone for any reason is, is important to all of us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Um, my name is Caitlin Draper, and I live at twenty-nine oh-two East Sterling Court. Um, I support this ordinance and the creation of a civil rights administrator in the city. Um, I think it's important because it's a step toward the abolishment of systematic and institutional oppression and discrimination. Um, the, the creation of this position indicates to me that the city is serious about the rights of oppressed populations. Um, I have an older sister that was born with spina bifida, and she uses a wheelchair to get around. Um, she lives in Dallas and she came up here to visit me, and it was embarrassing because of some of the comments that she endured and, um, and various other forms of discrimination. Um, so, um, I see this position as, uh, an ally and an advocate, um, and as an enforcer of civil rights. So, as a citizen, I ask you to please vote yes on ordinance one nineteen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Jordan, my name's Lynn Lloyd, one oh-six North Palmer. Um, just want to, um, say a couple of things. One, uh, just a couple of concerns that I have over this ordinance, and I've only really kinda gotten involved. I was one of the uninformed until the last, uh, three or four days, and so I've tried to catch up on a lot of the, uh, the debate on both sides and, and the issues on both sides. But a couple of, a couple of issues that, uh, for me are, uh, the city administrator that, that might be appointed, there's just some guidelines, uh, you know, thinking through those, seeing those, um, expanded and, and, and job description, those, those kinda things. And then, um, as a, um, you know, as a long-term resident of Fayetteville, we had five children. They attended public school and private school and that, and I'm concerned about, uh, this, uh, the fact that some of our private schools aren't gonna be exempted from, from some of these, uh, rules. And, uh, definitely, uh, discrimination is wrong, uh, but I'm, I'm afraid that this ordinance at this time is probably not, not the, not the right ordinance. There's, and, and I don't know if there's a, an opportunity to, to table it, to get more input, to get more discussion, uh, to, to gather more facts, but, um, if, if not- discussion, to gather more facts, but if not, then please consider voting no on this ordinance.
Thank you. Are you taking comments from someone from the metropolis of Coons, Arkansas? Or, sorry, I said, are you taking comments from the metropolis of Coons, Arkansas?
It's for Fayetteville residents first.
Okay.
Okay.
My name is Houston Hughes. I live at 888 West Lawson Street in Fayetteville, Arkansas. What I do primarily is arts and entertainment. That's what I do for this city. I fell in love with this city when I moved up here about five years ago, and ever since then, I've done everything I could to bring more art and more creativity into this city. When you talk about the kinds of economy that are affected by laws like this, you cannot overlook the creative economy. And the types of people who move to a city with laws like this in place are the creative types. Because when you look at creative types, creative types tend to not just express themselves through their canvas or through their words, they express themselves just as often through their bodies, through the ways that they live. And it's necessary to make sure that those people feel at home here. That's part of bringing a vibrant economy here. And if there are businesses that we lose in that process, goodbye. Some folks seem concerned with restrooms, dressing rooms, and how all this will affect children. Those concerns seem to completely ignore that people who wish to do unethical things are unlikely to be stopped by the magical force field set up with gender signs on restrooms. These concerns ignore the fact that the proposal is meant to stop people of all ages from being harassed or made to feel uncomfortable, exactly as you might fear your child would. These concerns ignore the fact that not only cities, but entire states have passed ordinances just like this, and none of them have reported an increased risk of predators. And they ignore the fact that it is not the job of the world to confine itself to only those things which are easily explainable to children or to the childish of any age. But for those parents who are wondering how to explain this to their children, let me speak briefly of my friend, Eris.
Houston, you have about a minute.
Okay. I'm going to run through this super fast then. My friend, Eris, is an excellent and amazing person, is not defined by her transgender-ness, and so why should you care what bathroom she goes into? Why can you not simply say to your child, "Here in Fayetteville, people have the job they are qualified for, live in the place that makes them happy, and use the restrooms they feel most comfortable with for using the restroom, because that's what you go to the restroom for." Everyone here is free to do the things that make them feel comfortable and happy, and never be afraid that someone might be able to take those away for good reason. In closing, there's a difference between the things that you ask of someone and that you expect of someone. I do not ask that the people on this council vote in favor of this amendment. I expect it of them.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lalia Griffith, and my address is over on North Chestnut here in Fayetteville. I've been a resident here for over a year. I started college of last year, and I have some truths. First of all, I'm a human being, as we all are. Second, I am female. I am referred to as sir on a daily basis. I'm a college student, and I need you to know that over twenty-seven universities have implemented a gender-neutral bathroom with little or no problems. There are risks for everyone, and with time, those risks increase, as with everything. When I enter a women's bathroom, I get told that I'm in the wrong bathroom. Sometimes I even check. I feel uncomfortable being told that I'm not in my designed genders bathroom and that I am not a woman. But if I enter the men's bathroom, I don't even warrant a second look. I just go in, enter the stall, do my business, and walk out. Yes, I wash my hands. I don't have a nefarious plan, not a criminal or a deviant. I am simply a human being in need of a restroom. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor. My name is Jordan Ivy. I'm a resident of Fayetteville, 2501 West Megan. I came here mad and angry because of what I saw two weeks ago. That wasn't a true representation of this community. But what I have seen tonight is heroes coming up, oppressed people that have told their story, and just the brave, I can't even start to feel the fear that those people felt. I do not come here to represent a certain political or religious affiliation. I'm here as an observer of history and a human being. We don't have to look far back into our long history of discrimination in this country. We always tend to outcast the minority before we accept them and assimilate them. No Irish need apply, no Scottish need apply. This country has oppressed second-class citizens. Only fifty years ago, surrounding towns around us were sundown towns, where African-Americans better get out of town before the sun set. Less than fifty years ago, nineteen states had bans on interracial marriage. This opinion, this country is formed on the basis that all men are created equal, but we all know that wasn't the case. Ever since then, each generation has struggled to equalize rights to a level playing field. And this is not taking the rights away from people. This is equalizing everybody else. Under the Fourteenth Amendment, there is an equal protection clause. I know people like to speak of the First Amendment. We are not infringing on their assembly, their free right to assembly, but when they work in within the public marketplace, religious beliefs should not trump physical realities.
Have one minute.
In closing, I just want to say, regardless of how someone identifies themselves, they are someone's daughter, someone's son, someone's mother, someone's father. These are human beings that are trying to do the best they can in life, and it is your responsibility as government not to have the opportunity inequality in this country. There is a huge gap, and it is your duty as representatives of this community to facilitate that. I'm very optimistic about our country. We have torn down walls of bigotry just very recently. I don't want to wait for a later generation to deal with this. The future is an infinite succession of the present. The time is now. We do not need to wait for a greater generation to fix this. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Kathy Campbell. I'm a registered voter in Fayetteville. I live at 1744 North Walnut. And I have a perspective that I don't think has been heard tonight. I am the mother of a transgender man who is also gay. I am also a member of PFLAG, parents, friends, and family of LGBT people, and I'm a Christian. I attend church nearly every Sunday. But my son, who is now thirty-two years old, told us about seven years ago that he was in the process of transitioning from female to male. And a possibility like that had never occurred to me. It sort of turned my world upside down. I mean, I had so many changes to deal with, as did the whole family. There was a deep voice, whiskers, body hair, different clothes, a new name, and the hardest part was changing pronouns. She became he, and I became the mother of a son rather than the mother of a daughter. And I'm proud of my son. It took amazing courage to do what he did. And all along the way, I have been concerned about his safety and his well-being. And as a gay, trans man, will he have legal protection? Will he be discriminated against? Will he be safe? Will he be harassed or beaten? These things have scared me then, and they still scare me for my own child. I'm not worried about my safety. I'm a straight woman. I'm okay. But I do worry about his safety and the safety of all the people like him. As a Christian, my support is informed by my faith. I don't know how it is that God created gays, lesbians, transgenders, and bisexual people, but it happened. They're here. And when I looked at the life of Jesus, who hung out with the marginalized and the outcast people and welcomed them, that's the model I try to use for my life, is to be inclusive, to be welcoming, and to let my thinking be informed by love. And that's one reason I support the anti-discrimination ordinance. What I believe as a Christian, what I want as a mother, and what I think is best for society all come together. People who are oppressed and aren't being able to, and prejudiced against, and aren't able to live the way they are intended to live...
Sorry, time's up.
...cost society money.
Aye.
I'll finish my sentence.
Fernando Garcia, 650 Adams Street, Ward Two. And I'm also president of the Omni Center for Peace, Justice, and Ecology. And our organization is supporting this ordinance on behalf of the Omni Center. I would like to encourage you all to vote in favor of the ordinance. When I was a child, my mom took my siblings and I to get a haircut. As we walked in, people got up and from the chairs that they were sitting in grabbed their purses and their belongings and put it in between their legs, thinking that we were going to steal them. After that, they refused to give us a haircut, so we had to leave and we had to go somewhere else. So, I know what discrimination feels like. But I don't have to go back to my childhood to remember or to be reminded that we are still living in a racist society. About a month ago, there was a rally protesting child refugees at the borders. The people protesting the children, some of them were wearing KKK shirts and KKK ball caps. Ironically, it was on MLK Boulevard. And so we're seeing that hate is in the community, and that's why we need an ordinance like this. Also, a few years ago, a friend went out to Dixon with a group of friends. He is brown, and his friends were white. He got there before his friends did, and that bar was having a cover charge. His white friends were not charged a cover, but he was. And so we're seeing several instances of discrimination. At a store that I go to, to work on some projects, to buy some material for some projects, I've been in there maybe about three or four times, and only once have I been asked...
Have one minute.
Only once I've been asked if I need any help. Recently, I went with my partner, who is white, and in less than ten minutes, we were asked three times if we needed any assistance, finding anything. We're also hearing a lot about religious liberty that's under attack. We often hear that, especially when we're talking about LGBTQ rights. But at the same time that we're hearing these things, that there's a violation of religious liberty, thousands of people in Fayetteville are going to church, and I haven't heard of any church shutting down because we have marriage equality now. And so it's absurd what we're hearing now. Also, we're seeing a lot of racism in the court system as well. People of color are more likely to go to jail for the same offenses that white people commit. And also, the Thirteenth Amendment, which abolished slavery, made it deception to indigenous servitude and slavery...
Aye.
I don't know if I could ask a question?
You can ask a question.
Okay. I know the city council had requested hearing more instances of discrimination, and so I would like to talk a little bit more about that.
What is the question you want to ask?
If I can talk a little bit more about discrimination...
I know. You've got to ask your question. You can't just keep going.
Okay. Can I talk more about discrimination?
No.
All right.
They've gave me a three-minute time limit. We're going to stay there.
All right. I understand. Thank you.
What's the two for? In the back.
There's a peace sign, I believe, that assigns affirmation of what the speaker is saying.
I'm sorry. I thought you were motioning for something else. I apologize. Yes.
Mayor, council members, citizens, and I don't have my voice. Good evening, or good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to our governance. It's a right that's granted, not granted, in some countries, and I appreciate the time taken to do this. My name is Jim Parish. I am at 2899 Hay Meadows Road. I am a new citizen of Fayetteville in Arkansas, and I've come to serve as the Unitarian Universalist Minister for the Fellowship of this town. And I'm finding that welcome warm, the city and surrounding area a lovely place to live. And I've shared in your annual ritual of road construction. It's not much different from where I come, but the construction is a welcome sign of progress, as is this council's considering this anti-discrimination ordinance. I come to this fair city and see that it is working to become exactly that, not just perceived as fair, but actually as a fair city, that through this ordinance, you will recognize that discrimination in the United States of America is not only morally and ethically wrong, but legally wrong, and we will stand with its citizens for their legal rights. This is what I expect an American government to do, to blow away the shadows of illegal discrimination wherever they are found, to be witness to democracy, equality, and justice. My denomination, Unitarian Universalism, was founded on Christian and humane principles at the very beginnings of this nation. We claim the hearts of Thomas Jefferson, Susan B. Anthony, Ralph Waldo Emerson, and many other men and women of freedom and civil rights throughout our nation's history. They, as we, stand with the Jesus who sought out and broke bread with the needy, the different, the cast aside, to say that they were equal to Him, as worthy as He, and just as loved by God or the universe. He did this in opposition to the religiously powerful, the royalty, in His time, because He understood that power creates blindness to the real needs of those who are in the shadows. We stand with the Jesus who stood on the side of love, and we believe resolutions like this also stand on the side of love. I have one minute. I trust this council to wisely administer this resolution, and we, the Unitarian Universalist Fellowship and the congregations, will support its passage as a step towards fulfilling the promise of the United States of America and Fayetteville, Arkansas, as a nation and city of fairness and love, recognizing that all of its citizens are created equal and shall be treated the same under the law in our hearts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm Nick Crump. I live at 578 North Scottsdale Drive, and I'd like to talk to you today in favor of the proposed legislation. And I've heard, we've heard in this meeting, a lot of talk about businesses and a lot of talk about rights. But the thing is that if you want to run a business, you have some options. You can go for a sole proprietorship, which to my understanding requires a license from the government, from the city. Or you can try to incorporate a limited liability corporation or one of the other forms of corporations with the state offices. But in order to do that, you are engaging in the creation of an institution or engaging in licensing in accordance with laws and practices with whatever organization that you are working through, be it city or state level. At no point in time did you ever file for a, has a person who wants to normalize in the workplace their religious beliefs or their preferences, at no point in time have they ever tried to create another type of organization, a nonprofit organization to push a social view. They've created, they've entered into the business world. They've created a company or a business...
Have one minute.
...intended to work for profit. And it would be best, I think, for this community, if people who are in business to make money remain in the business of making money instead of in the business of trying to dictate people's private lives. And it's been a pretty late evening, so I'll let it rest at that. Good night, and have a pleasant evening.
Thank you.